This conference will now be recorded.
I'm in a time warp or something. But we'll go ahead, since everyone else seems to think it's 7:30, we'll go ahead and start. Bring the city council meeting for today, May 26th, to order. And ask that you all join me in the pledge of allegiance, being followed by our invocation this evening by Pastor Jenkins. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for its lands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good gracious, God, we just bow before you. Thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for your love. We thank you that you continue to work in our midst. We just pray for all in our city, that you protect them, keep them safe. Pray for the meeting tonight, that it go well, be honoring to you, that the business that you hand will be accomplished. And may it all be to your honor and glory. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And with the city council meetings, usually we ask for citizens' concerns. And what I'll do is ask if there's been any, provided to any of the city council members, or Christina Brake about items not on tonight's agenda.
I haven't asked anything.
We'll continue, move along to our first item, which is our presentation to the VFW. I hope everyone has had an opportunity to see the wonderful Memorial Day celebration that we had on video. And I was very proud to be a part of that. It was due to Minnie's effort. The Christina Brake and is the one who probably goes the most without being thanked. But I sure appreciate what she did to have that happen, as well as the VFW and former councilman George Cooper, as well as the police department drone program officer, I'm sorry, Watson. And Kayla Williams with the school district that helped with the production. And so I personally am very grateful for all of them that participated. I thought it was a very nice honor. And I think in these trying times, it was, it was a great way to memorialize that holiday. And with that, we have a honorarium that we have for our local VFW for their participation. And I'd like to present that now to Jim Jenkins. So here, Jim.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the veterans of foreign wars post 6401, we thank you and the city for your support. I want to appreciate a special thanks to Chris and George Cooper, who helped us. And Chris's daughter Peyton, that helped us put flags on the graves. And there was three of us VFW members involved, and we got them out. Was going to take them down today, but I didn't want to take them down wet. So hopefully tomorrow they dry up and we can get them taken down. But thank you very much for the city's support. And I really, really appreciated the video. And Chris, you did a great job, you know, putting that together. I know you had help, but you orchestrated it, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I appreciated all the help I got.
That was great. And it was no small feat. That was, that was something to have that production as, was great. Especially considering one of the characters in it had a lot longer hair. Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda this evening. Our consent agenda includes the minutes from the May 11th meeting, claims for city operations, claims for the public housing authority. Is there anything to be pulled by city staff? Citizens? Councilmen, clarification or concerns? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written.
Shannon, second. Been moved and seconded, can I have a vote, please?
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Kip?
Kip, yes.
Gurley?
Gurley, yes.
Wood?
Wood, yes.
Thompson?
Thompson, yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Shannon, yes.
Mayor, the motion passes.
Very good, thank you very much. Onto old business, which we have none, that makes it quick. We'll move right into new business. Item number one, the Government Services Center change order. This is the request for the Sallyport. I'll go ahead and ask for a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just really quickly, after several conversations with the city council, this is the outcome of the changes going on at the Sallyport, as well as some general site plan changes that need to be done to accommodate this new Sallyport design. The cost is $151,625.17. That has been submitted by KBS, been reviewed by SFS. And again, these are the, for the proposed changes that have been discussed with the council on a few different occasions. I believe Carrie and Dana are both on the call, as well as some representatives from KBS. Should the council have any specific questions about the design? And I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Carrie, Dana, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing, I mean, the only thing I would just say is that this, it, it needs the option that keeps the same footprint, but enlarges the doors and the ceiling height.
Very good, that's.
I make it sound very simple, but there's a whole host of.
Seventy-three.
Yeah, yeah. And happy to discuss more in detail if you have any questions.
Very good, thank you. So we can, any other staff? Sergeant Cruz? Gross, sorry, Gross. All right, seeing nothing else from the staff, no citizens' questions, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve change order request number 95, at a cost not to exceed $151,625.17.
Second.
So moved and seconded, can I have questions, concerns, comments by roll call, please?
Shannon? Any questions?
No questions.
Mackey?
Yes, I had a question on, I actually made sure to read through all the documents. I am, and the reason I said it is, when I was looking at the parking lot, is the 151,000, is that part of the full parking lot? Reason I ask is because it was phased. So behind the Sallyport, there, it shows half of the parking lot. The way that it looked to me, this cost was for only half the parking lot. And I wanted to make sure that we figured out the retaining wall, as well as the remainder of the lot.
Yeah, so the reason why you see kind of a different drawings for the parking lot, was when we issued these bid documents, it was still phased. It's no longer phased. So there were some modifications that had to be made to the parking lot. For example, we, knowing that we want to bring an ambulance into possibly the North Bay, we kind of widened out the curb. And as a result, we moved the, we had some islands, or I'm sorry, like peninsulas in the main scene. So we, we had to remove those and kind of, we have the same number of spots, we had to move that over. And then there was some regrading as a result of that, and some striping on the west side. There's more modifications to the parking lot. The whole parking lot is part of the base, the base bed.
Okay. I was also, I noticed in there a, on one of the drawings, a former retention pond. I can't remember if it was on the original drawings or the secondary. It looked like we initially had retention pond before we put in the rest of the parking lot. What happened with that?
No, no, we never had a retention pond.
Okay. I just swiped the document off and removed it from my iPad, or I would ask you directly. Because it had, on the grading, it showed right behind the parking lot, and it said, it didn't say retention, it said something, but I was just curious.
Maybe retaining, retaining wall?
It was right after the retaining wall. There was a probably 10-foot drop. And I was curious, the reason I was asking about that was for the drainage on it. Because I noticed that the new retaining wall and the rest of the parking lot had one single drain towards the backside of it. And I was curious, did that, does that go directly into our stormwater area?
Yeah. It should go to your storm. I know we were able to remove an inlet for the storm as a result of the regrading.
Okay.
That may be what you're.
I think that's probably what I'm thinking of, because they were, I, like I said, I had all the documents pulled up on my iPad, and I kept getting them. I had to check the dates on it to when they were done. And I did want to mention, thank you guys for how clearly those were worded and broke down. I mean, the little bubbles around it, and everything was delineated really, really well to be able to read those, read all the additions. It made it pretty simple to be able to see that. And I was laughing when I saw the 10-foot doors and the, the, there was a notation of the, the door hanging and all the equipment to make sure it's 10-foot above the floor. So I really appreciated that, because I knew that we had a couple of conversations about that. So I'll stop on that, thank you guys, appreciate all the hard work. The documents looked great, and I'll end with that.
Thompson, any questions?
Thompson, no questions.
Wood?
Wood, no questions.
Gurley?
Gurley, no questions.
Kip?
Kip, no questions.
Stevens?
Well, just a quick observation, and Dana and Carrie, if you could correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like you were able to salvage most of that canopy and only taper it just at the very end as it gets to the garage itself, the Sallyport. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I don't remember, we may have shaved off six inches. We were trying to keep it within the curb line, just in case, you know, someone not, you know, maybe driving an ambulance in doesn't, doesn't clip it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate it. And I know it's been a, it was a long battle for everybody, a lot of long nights, so I'm glad we finally got here. No more questions.
Reeves?
No questions. Thank you for the other questions, Jordan.
Mayor, you ready for a vote?
Yes, please, vote.
Okay, Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Gurley?
Gurley, yes.
Thompson?
Thompson, yes.
Shannon?
Shannon, yes.
Reeves?
Reeves, yes.
Kip?
Kip, yes.
Wood?
Wood, yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion passed.
Very good. Thank you all very much. That's a lot of hard work by staff and, and the council, so thank you very much. And Mr. Newman and Ms. Skoll, thank you very much also. And we'll keep on watching this project happen in Bonner Springs. So hopefully this will meet the needs well into the future. So continuing on, we'll go to item, old, new business, item number two, livestock and chicken permit fee. Chief?
Chief, you're muted if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, I'm not prepared for that. I think Kendra was supposed to present it tonight, and I don't see her on here, so.
I can probably address it for you, Mayor.
Okay, please, I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay, that's good. At a previous meeting, the council approved permits for keeping chickens and livestock for exceptions to the code. And in that, we stopped a while back approving specific fees in the ordinances, because it's such a challenge to change them. So the animal control officer submitted this item with the recommended fees for those permits.
All right, and then it'll be put into the fees and ordinances and increased, along with all the other fees?
It would be put into the fees, and those we review every year in December. The ordinance states that where, that there is a fee for the chicken and livestock permits, but does not specify a fee. And we do that on purpose.
Okay, so we can increase it or whatever. Very good. Thank you very much. Any, let's have questions, concerns, comments by the council, please?
Do we need a motion first?
Oh, yeah, we sure do. As a matter of fact, I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Roger Shannon, make a motion to approve the recommendation, recommended fee of $10 per application for livestock and chicken permits.
Reeves, second.
Been moved and seconded. Now, we'll go ahead and have a question, since, concerns and comments by council by roll call.
Okay, Shannon?
No questions.
Mackey?
I just wanted to thank you guys for working on this. This is one of the most amusing questions that I've received since I've been on council, and I've received it a lot, especially in my neighborhood. So thank you, everybody who worked on this.
Thompson?
No questions, Thompson.
Wood?
Wood, no questions.
Gurley?
Gurley, no questions.
Kip? You're muted, Kip. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Are ducks included? Are those livestock?
You know, I don't, I don't know, honestly.
I've seen, I've seen somebody with ducks, so I didn't know if that was covered or, or not.
I don't know if they're covered in this particular portion of the ordinance, I don't know.
The application, there's a spot for other, so I figured it could be livestock, but.
I'm pretty sure they're covered under the ordinance.
Okay.
I, I think they're called, it's just water, or it's called fowl, is, is how it's described in the ordinance, but we can double check that.
Okay, I was just curious if they needed a permit as well or not. Thank you.
Okay, Stevens?
Stevens, no questions.
Reeves?
Reeves, no questions, but I'm glad chickens have to get permits.
Mayor, are we ready for a vote?
Yes, please.
Okay, Mackey?
Mackey, yes.
Gurley?
Gurley, yes.
Reeves?
Reeves, yes.
Shannon?
Shannon, yes.
Thompson?
Thompson, yes.
Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Kip?
Kip, yes.
Wood?
Wood, yes.
Mayor, the motion passed.
Unanimously, congratulations. Now be able to continue permitted livestock and chickens. That concludes the new business. We'll move right on into city manager's report, Sean.
Let's make sure I'm off mute here. Just quickly, if I can find my notes, which I'm sure I lost somewhere along the way, I sure did. So I looked at my hand where I write my notes down. Just wanted to give everybody an update on the census quickly. As I think we all know, 2020 is a census year, a great year to have people going around knocking door to door. But to avoid that, folks can actually do the self-report online and actually do your census that way. Right now, we are at about 66.5%, which is pacing about a percentage point higher than the state on average. I think we're far exceeding the rest of the county as far as the self-response is concerned. So kudos to everybody that's already done that, and for the remainder of the folks, again, this is a great opportunity just to go online and complete it that way. So thank you very much. Also wanted to note, City Hall has slowly started to reopen to the public in the lobby area. We started that last week, and that has been going pretty well, I would say very well. We have certain areas set up, designative social distance signing, hand sanitizer available, as well as partitions to ensure the safety of patrons, as well as our city staff that are interacting with people frequently throughout the day. So again, that's something that we continue to try to perfect, as everybody else does. And we'll continue to make strides in providing city services as, as we normally do. With that in mind, we are starting to look at the potential of hosting public meetings in person again. So this is something that, if the council has any direction or thoughts on that, please share that with me, or obviously bring it up tonight, but we are pacing towards that. Again, that would be a scenario where we would have a public meeting in person, but we would need to have certain procedures put into place as far as making sure separation is, or social distancing rather, is, is followed, among other things. So again, if anybody has any feedback or thoughts on that from the council, I'd be delighted to hear it. But again, we are trying to work towards that for the month of June. Excuse me, and that will affect planning and zoning as well, planning commission as we, as we work towards that, again, in the next month. With that, I just wanted to bring up, just so everybody's aware, if they aren't already with the news today, that the governor did veto, or is intending to veto, the legislature's action later last, our past week. What this means is some complications as far as enforcement is concerned, and regulations versus guidelines and things like that. So in an already confusing state of affairs, things are, are going to become even more confusing over the next probably day or two, as we try to understand exactly what, what this means on a local level, a practical level, in terms of, again, how we reopen and what type of restrictions can really be put in place on folks, as again, we try to muddle through, again, this new normal. So with that, that concludes my report, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I, as I understand it now, the responsibility will lie on the local health officials in each county. And with our past experience with the Windup County Health Department, I would imagine they have a contingency for this, and will not have a huge change right at the very immediate situation, but will review the data and make the appropriate adjustments as necessary. The last thing that Windup County did was decide to follow the state plan. So we are right now, the state plan up until Governor Kelly just vetoed the emergency order, was phase two, which limited us to 15-person gatherings, and just about everything except bars and nightclubs was open to the public, large venues and other things. No festivals or parades or carnivals. But I would imagine that, I would expect that will continue, or something very similar to that, the plan that the state had, which is still recommended, and it's still recommended to have face masks, although they are not required. It's just that is the best recommendation, and one that I'm following personally, and trying to set a good example for. We'll go ahead and ask for city council items, and we'll do that by Christina's roll call.
Reeves? You're muted.
I wanted to be sure and thank the city staff, the mayor, and all those for that rendition of our Memorial Day service. That was very, very nice. Appreciate it so much, and I know all the people on the cemetery committee appreciated that too. Thank you.
Stevens?
I have nothing actually to add this evening.
Again, ditto what Councilman Reeves said, thank you for all the efforts. And Sean, I've had a couple of constituents ask me about, I think they've addressed it with the city regarding blasting off of the quarry. Are you familiar with that? They've had some problems with their foundations.
Yeah, I think I know the specific one that you're alluding to. The, the, the folks that had some concerns regarding that have made contact, or vice versa, with the company there. So they are kind of going through some steps between those two, again, as a civil matter, just to try to understand exactly what's going on. My understanding is they're going to monitor the situation around there, and ultimately see what the data has to say as far as vibrations and what have you are concerned. But again, it's my understanding that the company and those property owners are trying to come to some resolution between them.
Okay, yeah, I think that, you know, they, they had talked to them, and last I heard, and again, this, this may not be updated, that the quarry had responded, we're doing everything within guidelines, you know? So it kind of ended at a stalemate there, as far as I know. I don't know what the city's involvement, if any, if it's, you know, we issue a blasting permit, is that how that goes?
Well, they have a, they have to actually follow some pretty stringent standards as far as federal government is concerned, as to how they are, when they're blasting, where they're blasting, how they're reporting that information. So again, there's not a lot of involvement that they have with the city, other than to say that they do have a, they had a special permit that is, again, this is an operation that's been around for quite some time here. So this is, again, kind of just a standard operating procedure for them. But again, I, I'm fairly certain, since that last communication that you may have received, they, they have in fact touched base with each other. My understanding is, again, they're going to put a seismic vibration reader up in those locations just to make sure, you know, no earth is rattling where it shouldn't be.
Well, that's, that sounds good. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Nothing else.
Gurley? Nothing from me, thank you. Wood?
Wood just wants to thank all of you for doing stuff in this awful, awful time. And I really would encourage us not to have a meeting together until we're so sure that it will be safe for everybody. That's all.
Okay, Thompson?
I don't mind being redundant. Thank you very much for the, for the memorial ceremony. My clocks distract me, I'm sorry, for the, for the video. We really appreciate what you all did and how you all, everybody worked on it. Chris, thank you very much, and for everybody that was involved. It means a lot. Jim knows what I mean, it just, it means a lot, thank you.
Glad to hear that. Mackey?
I got a couple things, so I tried to write them down. Uh, I got a couple things, so I tried to write them down, the first one was, uh, I wanted to thank basically our community and the constituents, uh, for rallying around the planning commission issue, I know that I'm typically the rebel and the loud mouth, but I do sometimes try to follow proper protocol, and this is one of them where I'm not trying to say too much, if you have an issue with the, something going through planning, please try to address that with Sean or Amber, or, um, even if you're a business that wants to come into Bonner, go ahead and reach out and try to, I mean, our city staff is excellent, I've worked with them on projects before, I've worked with developers and stuff on projects before, just trying to cram stuff through is the easiest way to get Bonner extremely excited, we had a, um, is the particular event I'm referring to, I think we had about three, 400 people, uh, on social media that got excited about it, if you have an issue, try to go through the proper channels, as I said, I know that I'm typically the rebel person, but I am attempting to get better and learn a little bit, even though I'm normally the rabble-rouser, I'm trying to curb those rough edges off, try to go to Sean or Amber, uh, or planning commission meetings before council, those things don't come directly to us, uh, another thing, a positive that I wanted to say was downtown looks great, um, I was doing my, I try to walk every once in a while, and the other night it was one to two in the morning, and, um, it looks amazing, uh, so everybody that's been working on that, and Sean and Mayor, and anybody that's had a hand in that, downtown looks amazing, I think it's gonna be a really cool splash whenever everything opens back up in this summer when people are walking around downtown, it, I mean, it literally looks like a whole brand new city downtown, it's pretty cool to see the curbs and how they're doing everything, um, Unemployment Cares Act, uh, if anybody is like myself, and still hasn't received any of the CARE Act funds, uh, from our, uh, Kansas Department of Labor, uh, there is an organization that's reached out to me, it's called Walk Away, uh, they're a national organization, and if you have any interest, feel free to look them up, um, or even feel free to reach out to me if you want any information on it, other than that, thank you guys for being here, uh, and I appreciate everybody's time, talk to you guys, uh, here soon.
Reeves?
I, I did my.
Oh, I'm sorry, Shannon? I went the wrong way on that list.
Getting us mixed up, um, just, uh, again, what everybody said, but I think also, big thanks to our staff, and all this, all the things they've had to go through, and especially our fire police and ambulance, um, the things that, uh, they've had to walk into, uh, both known and unknown by, by a lot of us, and, uh, that, uh, that's taken a lot, and I have the deepest respect for all of them, and I just wanted to tell everybody thank you, this is, this is a sign of a great community and, uh, great people that live here, thank you.
Mayor, your turn.
All right, well, um, I'd like to thank all of you city council people too, uh, I know there's a lot of times that you're asked a lot of questions, and putting people in contact with the right answers is the biggest part of our job, uh, our whole, whole community, just like every community's being affected by this, um, virus, and as we reopen, uh, there's a lot of challenges, a lot of fear, uh, of reopening as well as the virus, uh, also, so, please try and keep others' perspectives in view, uh, we have a wide range of people and their concerns in this community, both, um, both sides of the issue, so, uh, I try and, uh, recognize the entire spectrum, uh, from those that, uh, have little concerns to those that have a lot, and try and walk that line, please give everyone the, the best information that we have, and right now, in limbo, uh, until the Windup County comes out, uh, I, I would imagine, uh, phase two of the AdAstra Plan will continue, uh, pretty sig, uh, pretty much intact for Windup County, uh, from my understanding is, uh, that now the responsibility beyond each individual county, uh, as well as probably on each individual school district as well, but that remains to be seen, so, um, Sean and I continue to, uh, be a part of the meetings every day with our local government, uh, once a week, meetings with the state government, and all by virtual, um, go-to meetings, and, uh, I kind of forget the last time we had the Windup Johnson County meeting, I think that's every other week or once a month, but there's a lot of information that's passed around, and we're, we're trying to keep everyone as best informed as possible, uh, the county health department website still has a lot of good information concerning the, uh, outbreaks and clusters and the concerns in our communities, so, uh, if you need to refer to those, uh, the city website has a wealth of information, very well designed and, and put together, I've got compliments from all over, um, concerning our social media here in Bonner Springs, so, um, these times like this is when it makes the biggest effect, um, and, uh, it's been put to the test and, and done well, our emergency services, the police department, fire and ambulance, um, my goodness, uh, you all should be commended for doing your jobs as well as you do, uh, I know you didn't sign up for a virus, but, uh, it comes with the territory, uh, we just do what we have to do and get through it, and you guys are doing exemplary, um, the, unfortunately, the services that we've had to, uh, make such a big impact on, the, the pool, the city, um, camp daycare, and the ball program, uh, we did, uh, act to, uh, cancel those or indefinitely postpone, whatever you want to say, um, and it, it seems as if those have stood the test of time by almost all communities following suit, uh, so I appreciate all the input and the wise counsel from the city staff, uh, I think we're caring for our community the best we can, uh, it's unfortunate that we're having to do that, but, uh, I think we're doing the very best we can with all the concerns, uh, the farmer's market has come out and announced that they'll be opening the end of this month, the end of May, uh, they have some, uh, very good, uh, plans that they have put out on social media for how to do that and keep people safe, uh, it looks like, uh, they put a lot of thought into that as well, and I'm, uh, I'm looking forward to that, they, I believe, could already have opened, uh, I don't believe that, uh, this change will, um, in the, the Azer, the state to the county control, will have much of an effect at all on that, um, most all of our programs, I doubt that will have much effect on that change because we were within the program before, um, this change happened, so, uh, there will be questions, uh, we'll get clarifications from the local, uh, Dr. Griner, the, our local county health official, uh, in the days to come, and I'll have more information, if anybody has questions, please reach out anytime, uh, the blasting, uh, that Mark mentioned, uh, they are, uh, in contact, the company and those property owners, uh, this isn't the first time they've had questions concerning that, they have a lot of, uh, data that they're analyzing, there's a couple of those seismic rigs or whatever to evaluate our community, uh, we felt it here, my house too, I think we're on the same, uh, rock ledge that they're currently working on, um, uh, the, the, uh, in closing, the only thing I had to, have to add is, uh, Sean, you might have, uh, the codes enforcement, uh, reach out to Kincaid, uh, the weeds in front of theirs on a main thoroughfare of Bonner Springs is, are starting to get, um, pretty significant, I know it's weed season, uh, but, uh, just maybe a phone call to a lot of these, uh, places will counteract a lot of that.
And I think, um, just with that, I know, at the start of every spring season, just everybody, um, knows, we, right now, we have to give everybody one notification that goes through a tremendous amount of time, um, so it takes about, I think we have a 10-day window to, to notify, so the weeds have to get over the, the threshold, which I think is six, uh, grass, six inches, then we have to go and notify, that takes 10 days, um, and then if that's not corrected, and then we'll go in and fix it, so the first couple weeks of spring, uh, where grass is growing, always, right now is, um, always takes a little bit longer with that particular property, I, I believe today was the last day, and as I looked at it, about five o'clock today, as, as the mayor had mentioned, it hadn't been taken care of, so it's my understanding, it, it will be, um, very quickly, um, taken care of.
And I have to reiterate, the, the downtown is coming along great with the improvements to sidewalk and curbs program, uh, the stamped concrete bricks, uh, look really good right now, they, uh, come out real well, uh, turned out real well, the, um, project all the way up, uh, Middleton, uh, looked like that's really improved and, um, preserved an asset that's very important to the city, the curbs, uh, streets and gutters are a big asset, the park surfaces, so it's nice that we're taking care of them, uh, as people start to get out more and more, they'll recognize, they'll barely, barely recognize Bonner Springs, I think you're right, uh, Kansas Avenue had a lot of, uh, in, uh, the milling overlay on Kansas Avenue that we've been waiting for quite some time, uh, is just beautiful with the striping, um, it, we get used to how things are in Bonner Springs, I guess that's human nature, I didn't recognize how, uh, rough Kansas Avenue was until it was milled, and then it, it seemed smoother when it was milled than it was before, so, I, I know that's the case on 138, 138 seems great milled, and that shows you how rough it was beforehand, so, uh, I'm not advocating milling all the streets and leaving them like that, but it, it is noticeable when it's better like that, um, I don't have anything additional, I sure appreciate everyone and the extra hard work and these virtual meetings, I'd rather go without, uh, yes, I want to start back, uh, face-to-face meetings when it is ultimately safe, as best as we can prepare for, um, uh, we do have some facilities, uh, at our disposal at the community center that allow for a lot of space, so we'll be able to, uh, as, as it is appropriate, accommodate everyone's concerns, and, uh, with our ability to use, uh, uh, virtual, uh, tools also, I think we'll be able to have some type of hybrid, uh, meeting if, if that's necessary, Danny, did you have something?
Well, my concern about spacing us out too much is to make sure we have the appropriate recording and microphones, so that the recordings are useful, people can hear what's being said, I know that the virtual meetings have been a huge improvement for people watching because they can actually hear everything.
Well said. Very good, unless anyone else has a question for me? We stand adjourned.